Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Bye.
How's it going? Good to go?
Yeah, it's a discussion. It's working, discussion. Yeah. Has to do with the fact that we're doing this.
I was trying to see if one day I said I got stopped.
Nothing to lose, yeah.
I ran red light.
And I didn't have the right time.
What was it, bloodline?
But if I tried my stuff, and I tried to set one up, and then it says that much, it wouldn't be reasonable.
But I was driving the other side, so I couldn't see.
They're helping out.
No, I, you know what? I was considering if I had a house, I was thinking, give me one. And I'm just looking to see if he could.
Do you know who I am?
No, I did not. I did not.
What's that? The Wi-Fi? You have no idea?
It should just log you in.
He's on his own tablet.
I don't think he's logged in before.
Let me find out from.
I have no idea what the password is. Do you have the password for the Wi-Fi?
Uh, no.
Okay, I got it.
You got it?
Speaking of minds, do you have a.
Oh, okay. Let's.
It's pretty sad, Jay.
If you've been swinging.
It still works, but it's pretty.
Does it just need to be, uh, email? Can we get it over to Coleman?
Eventually.
Okay. Well, when you're ready, drop it off.
What?
Your tablet.
Mine's pretty good.
Yours is a little older, eh?
Yeah, mine is pretty old. Yeah, yours is.
Pretty nice. Hey. Step off. Happens when you're here for 14 years.
Yeah.
You get old stuff.
You ready, Mrs. Anderson?
I am ready.
Oh, it's, we got Jen on here.
So when Ben, when Ben was done, did he turn in like his strong tablet?
What do you mean?
Ben Fredericks. Uh, that part right there. Just, oh, 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 sorry. I should have brought it over. Is Ms. Rowland getting online?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, interesting.
I don't see her yet. That must be it. There we go.
This conference will now be recorded.
Are you ready, Mrs. Anderson?
I am.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, everyone. Time is now 7:01. If I could please get you to silence your cell phones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Rounds?
Here.
Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Holland?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Rowland?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
All right. Uh, Ms. Rowland is online this evening, and I made a statement at 6:30. There wasn't many people listening. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Plaza has resigned as effective this afternoon via email from his position on City Council. So come the next meeting, we will be putting out the process to council. I believe the rules state we have 90 days to fill his position or to find a qualified candidate. So we will be going through that process, and we'll bring that to council on, um, what is the next? I don't know the next council.
Twenty second.
At the next, on the 22nd of February for discussion and to lay out that process. We just found that out this afternoon. And we have no presentations this evening. And moving on to Citizen Communications for Items Not on the Agenda. Mr. Belile.
Good evening, everybody. And I am just coming to remind everybody about Planters Days, June 16th through the 19th. We're doing the full show this year again. Um, since we haven't been able to do it the last couple of years, we're going crazy this year. Are gonna do more than we usually do, actually. So tomorrow, we'll have our meeting at Columbia Bank at 6 o'clock. Um, hopefully, there's enough room if anybody else wants to come. But we'll be ironing out some details as we get closer here, dealing with fireworks and music and stages and carnivals and things like that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the gallery that failed to sign up for items not on the agenda? Now is your opportunity to step forward. All right, seeing none. And I don't see. Is there an extra chief? Can you grab Mr. Burke?
Can you grab me one too?
Agenda, please.
If there is.
Is there anyone online for items not on the agenda? And I thought we had somebody joining us for not on the agenda.
Mike Peterson was supposed to be on that.
Okay. What's that? Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We're good. Thank you, chief. All right. Seeing no one else, moving on to items on the agenda. Terry Casey. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. Please bear with me. I am not a trained speaker, so this might be a little awkward. Those of you who don't know me, I'm in my 21st. I'll be finishing up 20 and start my 21st year with the City of Woodland in April. I'd like to thank my dedicated service to this community and the city is without question. Uh, unfortunately, the topic matter I'm gonna talk about is not all that pleasant. The recent proposal for employment contract for lieutenant's position completely took the Woodland Police Officers Association off guard. I want to remind the mayor that recently, we had a meeting. I asked you a direct question, and from my perspective, you both faced lied to me. That's, I'm trying to get my, I'm still trying to wrap my head around, around that in and of itself. But here, not to beat too much up on, on the subject matter, um, I just, I'm still trying to find why something's so arbitrary. We couldn't have just been honest. But anyway, not to get too far into the weeds, um, I'd like to urge the council, if it, if it's not too late, to vote down this position. And if not, vote it down, at least table it till we have a little bit more time to address it. The, uh, from my understanding, and I don't have time to go through the entire civil service rules and Woodland, um, City of Woodland's, uh, personal policy manual, um, none of it seems to, well, maybe not none of it. That's, that's a bold statement. It seems to be a complete departure from past practice. I have notes, and I've gotten off in here again. I'll remind you, I'm not, I'm not a trained speaker. I'd like to point out, currently, we kind of have a lieutenant. When I say kind of, it's our administrative sergeant. The job duties are very similar for probably half of that job description. And I don't know how many of y'all remember, a few years ago, I think we had an ad hoc committee that actually addressed the needs of the department. And this administrative sergeant, the title and position was recommended and approved by the voters with a levy-lid lift, if I said that right. Levy, levy-lid lift, correct. Here again. City service rules and procedures, um, and the civil, excuse me, the civil service rules and procedures and the city's own hiring, um, policy was not even remotely followed. Um, I don't have the time to voice each violation, but I gladly sit down with each and every one of you and point them out, um, or email them to you. I'm easy to get ahold of. The, and I'd like to also point out that we first, it just had nothing to do with Jennifer Ortiz. My understanding is she is completely squared away, probably a phenomenal asset to the, to the agency. That's, that's not the point I want to make. It's the process was not remote, remotely adhered to. We have, I mean, it seems like it's urgent, seems like there was a complete lack of transparency. We just heard about this Thursday. We have a qualified member who could have applied for it, but the hearing was, had already been posted for two weeks. The first hearing was, was January 21st, I believe. And so completely circumvented any member of our current agency to apply. There are service, civil service rules in place that would allow even maybe someone that doesn't have all the requirements to petition for waivers. Our current chief, our former chief, one of our former chiefs, had to petition the civil service to waive education requirements in lieu of multiple years of experience in service. Those things are in place for a reason, so that it is a competitive test. Civil service by itself, the whole process of getting hired, every one of us took a, that worked for the Woodland Police Department, took a competitive test. Seems like that was completely foregone in this situation. And now the really uncomfortable part. Whether you like it or not, it, it gives the appearance of nepotism. Now nepotism is, by our city standard, relatives, but by a lot of other standards, it's close friends. Now, here again, this has got nothing to do with, next to nothing to do with, with Ms. Ortiz. Like I said, she could be a phenomenal asset, but the process should have taken place how it should have took in place. Like I said, every, every, every dedicated current member should have had, that had a realist, uh, realistic desire, should have been afforded the same courtesy, um, that has been granted by previous chiefs, current chief, and spelled out in civil service. And obviously, be able to petition civil service for any waivers in order to have a competitive testing application process. It's just, it's really unfortunate that it seems that this relationship between the police association and the city has come up, because of this, seems to be a little bit adversarial. I hope it doesn't go further than that. I mean, you, you talked to me about trust, right? Do you remember that conversation? This isn't how you do it. This was a complete lack of transparency on the city's part, in our opinion. Here again, to, to finish up, I think I've taken.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Casey.
All right. Not opposed to it, but it'd be really nice to have it done the right way. Thanks for your time.
Anyone else in the gallery who failed to sign up for items on the agenda? Now is your opportunity to step forward. Mrs. Butler.
In light of the discussion I just heard, I would like to support the tabling of this issue for now. Thank you.
Anyone else for items on the agenda? Anyone online for items on the agenda? Seeing no one. Thank you. Moving on to agenda approval.
I'm making motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Rounds, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Uh, Mrs. Anderson.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving on to reports of City Council.
Well, I had coffee last week with Ms. Ortiz, and it was very, very pleasurable to meet her, and I think she's very qualified for the position that we're talking about tonight. But that's not the only thing I've done very recent. I know some people have gone to the, uh, Chamber Banquet, and so it's a tough task.
I attended the Chamber Banquet. Um, I didn't make it through the entire Chamber Banquet. I had to leave early for another, um, event I wanted to go to. Um, but it was a nice showing, and, uh, it's always a pleasure when you can go and meet new people.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to reports of standing committees, public safety.
Uh, we met today, um, at 5:30, and, um, we discussed that, um, well, first of all, under new business, Mr. Peterson and his wife were present and wanted to talk to us about, um, doing an ordinance to allow all-wheel terrain vehicles. I guess Vancouver and Kualama have accepted the ordinance, and they'd like for us to take a look at that and approve it also. The police department, uh, lieutenant contract, the PSC members further, requested further discussion at tonight's executive session. Department update, Chief Kelly informed the committee that Officer Werner will be starting Basic Law Enforcement Academy tomorrow, and a lateral candidate has been given a conditional offer of employment. Chief Kelly is waiting for the results of a psychological exam. If there is a pause about some of the exam, the officer will be given an offer of employment. This will leave one position to be filled. Oral board for the vacant spot will be later this month. We didn't have anything under old business, and we adjourned at 6:07, and our next meeting will be March the 7th of 2022, at 5:30 p.m.
Questions for Mrs. Rounds? I believe the Public Safety Committee was canceled this evening? Okay. Next meeting for that is going to be March 7th at 5:30. Moving on to reports of Advisory Committees. Chamber of Commerce will be reporting at the second meeting in, uh, of the month. Calis Waukaiakam Council of Governments. Um, I attended a meeting with that. It was my first meeting. It was introductory. Uh, I was placed on the Executive Board for the COG, uh, so I'm still trying to figure out what my role is going to be with that. But I know that we have a call for projects, and I believe I passed on to, uh, Ms. Coleman, uh, for dollars that will be given away, uh, for safety projects, I believe. Is that correct? It says safety projects? That was transportation.
Transportation safety plan.
Yes. I'm still trying to learn my role. So, uh, more to come with COG as we move forward. And DWR, have you had a meeting yet?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Moving on to reports of city officers. Uh, I'll go first. I attended the chamber dinner. I saw Mr. Burke and Mr. Smith there. I think, Mr. Chapman, you were supposed to be there. I'm assuming you got called out to work?
He was there.
No, he was there. Were you there?
Yeah.
Did we talk?
No.
I didn't think so.
No.
I don't recall seeing you.
I was at the table with the, uh.
I was expecting to see you there.
County PUD Commissioner.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Nice.
I was rubbing over electricity.
No. Uh, and I don't know that anything else has really transpired. Uh, we had a meeting with the port today, uh, so we're working through some things there. I attended the port meeting last week, and, uh, more to come to council, I believe during a retreat on that on the 19th, so don't forget about that.
Remember who won the awards from the chamber?
We'll wait for Ms. Miller to report on that, uh, at the second meeting of the month. Council Retreat, don't forget, is on the 19th. Will be starting at 8:00 a.m. here, uh, for coffee, and then 9:00 a.m. start time. We'll have that agenda out. We've already started working on that. Mr. Boyce will be meeting, Mr. Boyce, I'll be meeting on that later too.
No, two Saturdays.
What's it?
Two Saturdays.
Two Saturdays.
Saturday, but Saturday.
Uh, in this room. Uh, we'll be, uh, nailing down the agenda and getting that out to you as soon as possible. And in light of the comments this evening about transparency, I think that we remember the conversation, uh, a little bit differently. I believe that I was probably extremely too honest, uh, during our conversation, uh, but we will agree to disagree with that. Moving on. Mr. Boyce.
Okay. I wanted to remind everyone, the next council meeting is on the 22nd, which is a Tuesday because of the holiday. Uh, so we'll see you on the 19th with the council retreat, and then the 22nd for the regular city council meeting. Wanted to let everyone know, we're still meeting with, uh, both units of the Teamsters, both Clerical and Public Works. Uh, we have another negotiation session scheduled for later in the month, uh, so that's ongoing.
Which will be discussing in next executive session at the end of this meeting.
Right. Exactly. Okay. And, uh, as the mayor stated, we're working on the agenda for the, um, city council retreat, so when we get it out, we'll do a draft agenda. If you have feedback, please let me know. Don't email everyone back. We don't want to have an illegal meeting. Let me know, and if councillors have items they want to address at the, at the meeting, we'll, we'll make sure that happens. Gonna keep it short tonight? That's what I have. If anyone, oh, I, I should mention too, that in the lieutenant contract, there were a couple typos, so, uh, when you look at the salary and you look at the, uh, uniform allowance, the numerical number is the correct. The written narrative number, uh, was incorrect. So, uh, wanted to point that out for everyone.
Questions for Mr. Boyce? Seeing none. Mr. Randolph?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Oh, wow. All right. Far away.
How exciting is this?
Holy smokes.
I'm sure you're all excited. Finance is really a triggerboard. Just so I tell you, we issued 55 W-2s and 41 1099s, which totals 96 information returns, which doesn't mean probably anything to anybody but me. Um, at 100, we have to file electronically. We file our W-2s electronically already, but our software right now doesn't allow us to, uh, file our 1099s electronically. I'm sure that's going to be fixed, because we're almost at the top there where we'll be moving over. I'm sure with, um, a few more employees, which we already have, that we might, we will have more than 100 information returns. That's new legislation that got passed, so that'll be nice, but it'll just be something we'll have to work out. Thought I'd tell you that through invoice cloud last year, payments were made of 1.948,646.04. That was for utilities, permits, business license, miscellaneous per, miscellaneous payments, community center rentals. That's all the electronic payments that were made. That was for the whole year. That was a pretty interesting number. Um, we went live with the master business license on January 22nd. We've already received our first payment of new license of $320. We received a second payment. We're getting it tomorrow, $80. The 22 business license this year went out in November of 2021, so we could start getting payments, so there wouldn't be such a influx of, uh, business license at the beginning of the year for the state. And from now on, the state will be taking care of it. We will, we will issue business license for, like, peddlers, but we will not be doing the standard business license that we're going through the state. There, there will be two fees. That's on the free schedule in, uh, resident and non-resident. Everybody will be in one of those categories. Just to tell you, I'm personally in December, January, and February months, working on all three of those months all at once, which gets to be quite confusing, because of the software, you gotta keep changing what period you're in if you forget, and you gotta go back and change all kinds of things. And another great interesting fact, I know you wanted to know these things, so we issued 164 checks in January, 127 more claims checks, six of them were payroll, and 31 were treasures, treasures checks. That does not include any electronic payments. That's just the manual checks that we issued, because you all get your checks, your payroll checks electronically, in case we're wondering about that number six. And that is it.
Thank you. Questions for Mrs. Anderson?
On a, by using a master business license, how much more is it costing a small business to get their license?
I believe it's, um, $15 now.
So now it's.
It was mine way back when that all started, but we, we put it off and put it off, because we didn't have to do it, and it's mandatory now.
Oh, it's mandatory?
It's mandatory.
Okay. Just one minute.
Can I just say that it's refreshing that you're excited by your department?
Well, I'm glad you're alive, and I said that before about how excited about finance, and Travis said, well, that's how he feels about planning.
That's right.
He feels about their own, why do police get excited about police things? You know, everybody gets excited about their whole level of interest. I am interested in finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Uh, Chief Kelly?
No report.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Fire is not with us this night. Uh, Mr. Goddard, Community Development?
Yes, so, um, I would like to, um, repeat what Pete said. The Planning Commission is meeting on the 17th. There are three public hearing items on the agenda. Uh, one is the Residential and Commercial Mixed Use Zoning Code, uh, proposal. The agricultural zoning is the second one, and then the third one is a request for marijuana retail sales, uh, for that to be revisited. Not in that particular order. I haven't decided which one we'll be doing first, but all three of those have been advertised on the agenda. Uh, I'd also like to point out that the 2021 Annual Report for Community Development is out, and it should be available online. Just looking for it right now. But, um, it should be available online. If you can't find it, give me a call, and I'll make sure that you get a copy, but I think I delivered it on paper at your last meeting, and I can deliver it by email electronically if you want that. So unless you have any questions?
All right. Seeing none. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Coleen, call the quirks.
Nothing to report.
All right. Thank you. Before we move on, I want to remind everyone, since Ms. Miller is not here, uh, legislative calls with the business chamber tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m. Uh, the link is, I think, online on their website.
It is.
Um, I know, Miss, I did join that call last week with Mr. Orcutt. Um, I'm not sure who's tomorrow. I think it might be Peter.
It's, uh, Peter Obarno.
Peter Obarno, uh, of Allen County. So, um, great information, so I encourage everyone to join in on those if you have the time. It's 30 minutes, um, of hardcore information of what's going on at the ledge session right now. Moving on to consent items.
I'd like to move, uh, remove consent item E.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke.
Let's remove it. Remove it for discussion, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Burke, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Consent items A, B, C, D, and F for approval. Mrs. Anderson?
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Consent items A, B, C, D, and F have been approved. Consent item E, employment contract for police lieutenant.
I, what do you want to know? What, I hold it?
Uh, motion?
It's open for discussion.
Motion, motion for discussion? Okay.
Approval, nonapproval? What's the, what's the motion on the floor?
Oh, I want to, well, I want to talk about it before we vote on it.
Okay.
So is that what you're waiting for, for me to talk about it?
Wait, oh, wait. It's, uh, come to, to a, a process of an action item now.
Right. Oh, okay.
So typically, action items will move for approval or disapproval with a second, and then discussion ensues.
Move the, move it to the action item I, I guess, right?
For discussion.
For discussion.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Burke, seconded by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Burke.
Aye. No.
You're up.
Oh, okay. So we're going to discuss it now?
Yes.
Okay. Forgot that policy. Uh, I kind of agree with, uh, Officer Casey. Um, I'm concerned about how the process was done. I felt that, I don't think it was done correctly, as I mentioned. There's a lot of problems with the contract, and I think we need to step back and fix problems before we go further on it. That's my, I believe.
Councilmember Rounds?
Well, I guess I have no comment on that, but it was advertised on the web, is that correct?
Yes.
It was on the, the city website, it was.
Yeah, city website, that's what I mean. So, if I'm not mistaken, Frank, that was done correctly?
Yes, it has to be publicly advertised, but there's no set things or numbers that you have to do, and if that's the normal way that the city looks for people, then I, I don't know of any legal objection to that.
And when was this advertised? Can someone tell me?
I, I will remind council that during open discussion, I'm gagged.
I heard it was advertised February third, when the agenda was asked to be released.
It wa, it was on, it's dated, the applic, the thing on the city website is dated for January seventh, and I do know that, I looked a couple weeks ago, and I did remember seeing that on there, with all the other officer positions that are available.
Okay, so, if the, if they did found out about it last Thursday, is that, is that what I understood?
When were the police notified?
Am I allowed to address her?
No.
Am I allowed to address her?
So, that's, that's, oh, that is listed, is that correct? Is that right?
It would be, yeah, yeah, the app, the thing on the city website is dated for January seventh.
It seems to me I looked at it and I never seen nothing.
So, I don't know, is this how we normally, Pete, is this how we normally advertise for people?
Well, when you're, when you're talking non-union positions, sometimes we've done it just on the website, sometimes we've done it on the website and the newspaper, sometimes like, well, I guess this is the union position, we were looking for certified water plant technicians, we actually sent direct emails to every certified operator in the state, depends on the situation.
And listed it on the website and the city website?
Yeah, it's always on the website.
So, I don't know, like I said, I had coffee with Ms. Ortiz, and I think she is highly qualified for the position that we're looking at to hire. Very nice lady, very nice lady, and I, I would have no qualms before hiring her, I, you know, I don't know, I know Mrs. Rowland has a few words to say too, I think, as far as how she felt, she talked with her, I had to leave after about an hour and a half, but I think she sat with her for about three hours and didn't, so, that's all, that's all I have to say. My turn.
Mr. Smith, we'll come back to you after everyone has a turn.
So, it sounded like the, is it Public Safety met with her, I think everybody was supposed to, but Councilmember Chapman didn't make it to it?
Didn't make it.
But it sounds like two of the three met with her, it sounds like she's very qualified. I'm, I'm not on the hiring committee, what I'm sitting before me right now is if I have a qualified candidate for the position that was approved by council during the budget process, and it sounds like she's very qualified, there's going to be hurt feelings in this process, not everybody's going to be happy with it, and it's a tough position to be in, because I think there's some people in the Woodland Department that are qualified position and would be a good candidate. What I have before me right now is a good candidate that the executive team has said that they wanted to move forward with. I don't see anything that would stop it at this point. After we sat through the executive session and talked about her qualifications, Ms. Rowland, Councilmember Rowland had some good tough about it, if she could elaborate on that, it would be nice to hear again, so that everybody could hear it.
Yes, I, is it my turn?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Rowland.
Okay, sorry, um, yeah, no, um, when I first sat in there, the first question I asked her was, what's your favorite dinosaur, because it's kind of an icebreaker question, and she answered it just as intentionally as she did any serious questions, and I loved that. We ended up losing track of time, we ended up chatting for three hours, and I had a lot of questions, and she very patiently answered them, she really assured me, she comes from a place of compassion, of empathy, she explained processes to me that I had always, I was always curious about, like, when, about investigating, about responding to calls, about even just, just the rapport, and how she interacts with people of all types, of victims, of suspects, of anyone, and she, her key thing to me was when I asked her about her interaction, she said, well, the first thing I think of is, you know, most time I'm meeting someone, it's not their best day, and just knowing that she came from that level of empathy into any situation, I think, just really put me at ease, and I just feel like she's a very genuine and a very caring person, and she takes her job seriously, and she's very knowledgeable. I absolutely enjoyed talking with her, and like I said, we lost track of time, it ended up being three hours, I had to go pick up my daughter from school, otherwise, I think we probably would have ended up continuing to talk, but I just, I have a really good feeling about her, and she seems perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Rowland.
Have you got anything?
Mr. Chapman?
I do, there's, mic on?
No, one more, there you go.
See what's on the first time, turn me on. How this came about and stuff, it's kind of, there's a lot of, I know way in the past, Mayor Finn talked about having a lateral, or not a lateral, but a lieutenant coming in to help with chief, and then that'd be like the next predecessor coming, you know, as in grooming for a place chief when he goes up, you know, as in other positions are doing that, and it kind of talked about it, and then ideas air, and often there's no more talk about it, because we've never had a position or a person to be able to file onto it. Then we started getting some lateral transfers and qualifications, and this individual came in and, hey, great, you know, and also it popped in again, I think the way it came about kind of left a bad taste in everybody, a lot of people's mouths, and how it came popping into and stuff, I mean, she is a great qualification, very qualified for the job and stuff like that, I think this, how everything kind of came together, didn't ball, didn't gel together too well, and it's still like oil and vinegar, and we're gonna have to shake the jar pretty good to get the gel, but hopefully everything will calm down and then figure it out. How that's going to happen, I don't know, that's where Mayor Finn and the chief will get hashed out with the, the, as you get, the union, you have your guys in their jobs, so then there's no job or money or thing taken away from them, how they're going to work that, I don't know, but that's your guys' business and stuff, we're doing that. I've caught a lot of great, lot of heat from citizens on what's going on, is that, yes, I don't know, we'll find out Monday night, we'll get in on discussion and talk about it, because some of this stuff is kind of interesting, and it's came short notice. If we're here discussing the individual, she is very qualified and a very nice gal, and I think she'd make a nice addition to the, to the force. It's kind of uneasy on how it all came down the pipe, is kind of where I am a little distraught and torn right now, so, and that's my two cents on the whole, on the whole agenda.
Ms. Lawrence, do you have anything?
I do. Sorry, you're gonna have to hold up a second. So, to agree with Carl, we really don't know anything any quicker than anybody else in town, the agenda comes out, and then we read it, and then while you're eating lunch with somebody, you see somebody's blowing it up on social media and seem to know a whole heck of a lot more than we know about anything, and that's cool, but I, I mean, just to kind of go back, I, I don't think that just because this particular candidate has an employment background in the same statewide agency that the mayor does, I don't think that necessarily means they're besties, and that he handpicked her to come to Woodland, I mean, I, that's kind of, just, that's snarky, I mean, I, I think we could all agree that there's a little more thought put into things than who can we put in place in our town, that may have been how things were done, and, and I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt, I'm just, I'm just saying. I feel like, because I know people, I feel like even though the candidate is highly qualified, because I know nothing except a name on this, and so I Googled the person, Google's an amazing tool, I'm, sounds like an amazing person that could come to our town and, and really bring a different perspective to the police department with her background. What I know about people, though, is that since there's some hubbity-bub about the process that has taken place, that it's, if, if council chooses to move forward with this contract, what I feel would happen is we are setting the candidate up for a disadvantage of walking into kind of a hostile situation. And I love everybody, don't, don't get me wrong, I just think that people might have perceptions in, in their head, and they may not intentionally treat somebody in a hostile manner, but it would be kind of a tumultuous situation for somebody to come in. A lot of valid things have been discussed, I have to, I have to defer when some, to the information disseminated from Officer Casey, he took the time to voice his concerns, we did get an email, kind of afternoon-ish, and I have a real job during the day, and I was busy, and I didn't really read that until just before our meeting. I feel like, and I use the word feel, just because that sounds nice, but I feel like the best approach would be to make people happy, to make a lot of people happy about this, as if it went back however long, I don't know, six weeks, whatever, a month, whatever you need to do, whatever people think is okay, to open it up, so whoever wants to apply for this position can apply for the position, everybody goes through the process, and however that works out, if it's the current person, then that's how it all works out, right? I mean, that sounds fair. That would be me, just because of what we've learned tonight and some of the thought processes that I've had while people have been talking. I just, from my, for, just for me, I just want to say, I think everybody is well aware of my utilization of social media over the years to make things in the forefront of people's minds, and that has worked out well in things like getting Prop One to pass, and, and disseminating information that wasn't well-known in the community concerning our police department. As a Woodlander, what I would like, and I am guilty of utilizing social media in that way, what I would like as a Woodlander is if rather than people have commentary online that is not part of public record, people have suspicions or want to rumor monger or whatever, it would be really nice if they would just shoot us an email or come here and say it, so we can have that dialogue. I literally have certain people blocked on social media, so I don't see this, I don't see a lot of things, because I am continually harassed and stalked by someone, so I just kind of block them on social media, and I'm allowed to do that, so I don't get to see a lot of the things that other people seem to see. But me, it would be really nice, is if somebody had, I think people are aware, how I feel about the police department, for instance, that if you have something like this, shoot a, shoot an email, or DM me, or something, I would love to hear it firsthand, I don't, I, I really, it bothers me when people send me screenshots of things, and I don't know anything about what they're talking about, and I think not everybody here is sitting on Facebook, I don't think, Carol, I don't think you hang out on Facebook, so, so you would not know, until we get here, and then it's like, we're the big jackasses, because we're not picking sides before we get here, we literally don't know anything faster than anybody else, we come here and we get to have the conversation for everybody, so if you don't come here and be part of the conversation, we just assume that the information we're hearing in this room, or what's on paper, is all there is to it. So I just want to put that out there, because I have this couple of seconds to have that, that way of saying that, because it's part of public record that I said that, so there you go.
Mr. Burke?
Okay, I got a couple questions, can I ask the chief a question?
Yep.
Chief, if, when you're hiring an officer or looking for an officer, where do you put your information at?
My information?
Yeah, in other words, what you want?
I, I guess I, I don't understand the question.
In other words, when you post an application...
Where's the advertisement? Where the advertisement goes?
Yeah.
Goes on public safety testing, it goes on, I think we, we put, sorry, you can back me up on this, the Wasp, the Waspic site, CJTC, the city site, yeah.
Okay, so you got quite a few sites, so if you're looking for a qualified applicant, unless you've got somebody in mind that you want to hire, wouldn't you put it on this Washington State Criminal Justice Training Center, an opening, the Washington State Police and Sheriff Association, the public safety testing, or any other local, regional newspapers?
Yes.
Okay, why didn't we do that for lieutenant?
I can't answer that question, I didn't advertise.
I didn't think so, okay, that's all.
Mr. Smith?
I understand delaying the process and trying to go through the process, and I've been, I've seen people get hired, and I've seen people not get jobs before that didn't like the process, and there's always a question of why wasn't somebody chosen over somebody else, and it falls back to, is it going to change if we keep going with this? If there was somebody that the executive team wanted to hire out of the city of Woodland, they would have done it, and they would have approached people, but they did not, and it's, it's hurt feelings, and it's tough, and it's, 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 it's never, it never sits well, but I don't think it's going to change the outcome here, I think we have a good candidate, and even Officer Casey said she's qualified, there's no questioning her qualifications, so when I'm sitting here before everybody, and they're telling me about the qualifications of somebody and how good of a candidate it is, if we delay this, does this candidate walk away because of animosity in here? And it's through no, through no fault of hers, if she's a good candidate, I don't think it's going to change the process here, and if it gets sent out there again, it's probably going to be somebody else again, and we'll be in the same boat here in another couple weeks, and I don't think it needs to keep being delayed and pushed down the road.
Mrs. Rounds?
Well, I just want to comment that I'm, I'm, that I love our police department, I really do, they do a great job, but unlike Mr. Smith, if we delay this process, we could lose this, this prospective candidate for the job, and again, like him, it could be the same outcome here in a few weeks if we delay the process, and this candidate could walk away and get a job someplace else, and I think it'd be very sad for Woodland if we lose this person, but I think our police department is great, I can't say enough about them, they do... They do a great job. And I hate that it's, but like you said, there's always hurt feelings, and sometimes you have to do tough things. And I hope with whatever decision we make tonight, that the officers and everybody will get along and not look at it in a hostile manner. Or if we wait, whoever else comes in, you know, I just hope that the outcome is a good one.
Further discussion. Mr. Burke.
So if we don't post it anywhere, we're not going to get it, find out whether we've got a better candidate or not. So we got to pick from one person. That's one of the big things. If you don't post it and try to get some applicants that have, are qualified, no, we're picking from one, basically one person, and she's going to be the best, because that's all we talked about. So I think we did the process wrong. And I heard the council vote no. That's it. And I appreciate the comment out of the meeting left tonight.
Noted. Anything further? Ms. Rowland?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Smith. I think that, to add on to it, I think it would be doing a disservice to Ms. Ortiz to force her to wait, again, because some people felt like it wasn't done properly, because like Mr. Smith said, we could lose out on a, we could, it could happen again. This could happen in circle and circle and circle until, it could go a whole nother year until the positions filled. Because at the end of the day, someone's going to be unhappy, and we can't make everyone happy. But I think that Ms. Ortiz is super qualified. I don't, and again, I want to, I want to respect her. And I think it would be, I don't think it would be a good look for Woodland to lead a candidate on and then have her wait another 30 days, because it makes us look disheveled and unprofessional. So I'd like to see us move on with her.
Thank you, Ms. Rowland. Further discussion. Seeing nothing else, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on Consent Item E, Employment Contract for Police Lieutenant.
Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
No.
Councilmember Burke?
No.
We have a 3-3. Mr. Randolph?
In accordance with our procedures, the mayor breaks the tie.
No, again, it concerns money. It concerns paying another paycheck, doesn't it?
In accordance with state statute, the mayor does not participate in council votes unless it becomes necessary to break a tie vote.
And it doesn't concern money. If it concerns money, you can't break a vote. You need radar.
The mayor shall not break a tie council vote involving the passage of an ordinance, which this is not, the acceptance of a grant, the revocation of a franchise or a license, or the payment of money. I think that payment of, let's see, let's see, payment of money. I mean, I think, I think that's basically if we are paying someone money. I think that's separate from the issue of money.
Like a contract or...
It's a contract.
Dave?
We've been through this before. Because anything the city will do will cost money. But I don't see anything in here. Let me look.
Do you need to take a look at the packet?
Can't get on the internet, or you can find it. Yeah, sure. It says we have a recess, only if it finds the information.
Not in the middle of a vote. Mr. Burke.
Aye.
Here, let me take a look at the statute. Yeah, what the statute says is the mayor shall preside over all meetings with the city council when present, but shall have a vote only in the case of a tie in the votes of a council member with respect to matters other than the passage of an ordinance, which is not a grant, a revocation of a franchise or license, or any resolution for the payment of money.
It's not a resolution.
Right, this isn't a resolution. I'm reading the same one you're reading.
Where's that at?
It is RCW 35A dot 12 dot 100, about halfway down.
35A dot what?
Uh, 35A dot 12 dot 100, duties and authority of the mayor veto and tie-breaking vote.
I don't see this as a, as a vote to pay money. Obviously, it involves spending money, but that, anything that the city does. So as it's not a decision to pay money, I think he has the right to break the tie.
Right, so if you read the one sentence where it's the passage of any ordinance, this is not, to grant or revoke a franchise or a license, that is not, or any resolution, which this isn't a resolution, for the payment of money. That's how I interpret it. We are not talking about an ordinance or a resolution.
So in other words, okay.
More to tie and the many to cast.
What a mayor recommends, he's going to vote himself.
And then he or she shall report to the council concerning the affairs of the city and its financial and other needs, and shall make recommendations for council consideration and action. He or she shall prepare and submit to the council a proposed budget, yada, yada, so...
I'm looking at MRC, let me see if they say anything. Yeah, again, I mean, what the statute says, or any, or any resolution for the payment of money, this is not a resolution, this is not about payment of money. And I know that, that according with state statute two, that given the size of our police force, you can have the chief and two others that are not, that are not part of the civil And I don't have the resources right now to look deeper. So I would, my decision, my judgment right now is that this does not involve a payment of money, so therefore the mayor has the right to break the tie.
Is that your decision, Mr. Randolph?
Yes, sir.
It's noted that you disagree, Mr. Burke. You ready?
No.
Oh, okay.
What am I doing?
Taking my vote.
Okay, I was waiting for your vote, yes.
Aye. Motion's passed. Moving on to Action Items, Action Item G, authorize mayor to sign change order number two with advanced excavating services for pressure increase, impeller change at the Scott Hill Booster Station.
I make a motion to authorize Action Item G to authorize mayor to sign change order number two with advanced excavating services for pressure increase, impeller change at the Scott Hill Booster Station.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Rounds, second by Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Rounds.
Well, we, it has to be done. That's all there is to it, in order for everything to function properly, and so it's, this needs to be done.
Councilmember Smith.
It sounds like there's not enough pressure up there, and this is the solution to correct the problem. At this point, we don't have a choice. Needs to be done.
Further discussion.
If I remember correctly, this is still under budget.
Yeah.
It's still well within its...
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
Anything further? Seeing nothing. Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on Action Item G, authorize mayor to sign change order number two with advanced excavating.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Action Item G has passed. Moving on to Action Item H, Ordinance Number 1504, an ordinance amending Woodland Municipal Code 2.48.020, requiring Public Works employees reside within 30 minutes travel time to the Woodland city limits. First reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Holland, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Holland.
Um, I, I can't get across town in almost 30 minutes sometimes, so I feel like, because of our traffic situation, this isn't really a bad idea, because I literally can't get from my house to Woodland Action on Saturdays in less than 20 minutes. And that's just across town, so that's, so I think it's fine.
Councilmember Chapman.
I agree.
Further discussion.
I personally work 30 minutes away from Woodland. If I worked in a city that said I couldn't work there because I was over 30 minutes, it wouldn't be good for me. So I think the timeline is arbitrary. I think if you're called and you can get here in a timely manner to make repairs, most repairs don't need to be made within 20, 30 minutes.
Mrs. Rounds.
I think 30 minutes is a very reasonable amount of time, so I have no problem with it.
Anything further?
Why did we have to make the change all of a sudden? Is there a reason why we're dropping? We've already got people living further than 20 minutes right now, 15 minutes, and now you're going to change it?
Ms. Coleman. Mr. Boyce.
Part of the issue and the reason it's come up now is that we are looking at, well, we've made some hires for the water treatment plant, so we need certified operators for that. We did find one certified operator that lives within the Woodland city limits, which is great, and we extended an offer of employment to that person. There was a second one, though, and he lives outside the 15 minutes. So the request to make the change now is that these certified operators are in very short supply. And when I mentioned earlier, you know, jurisdictions like Vancouver are having trouble filling certified operator positions. We have one now that's, you know, within the 30 minutes, but over the 15 minutes. And there are jurisdictions that are with these positions unfilled. We have a retirement coming up and maybe another one pending. And it is just very, very difficult to find these certified operators, and that's the reason we made the request now.
And how do you figure 20 minutes between 30 minutes, 20 minutes or so? What kind of driving?
So...
Just normal?
I just want to say another reason why it's important to make this change is because in the contract, the union contract, it states that you have to have a 30-minute response time. Why would you have in a union contract a 30-minute response time yet the person has to live within 15 minutes? So this also ties to our union contract. That if we have a 30-minute response time in a union contract, we should allow them to live within 30 minutes of that contract as well.
True.
And the other thing is, is that we were talking about, you know, sending out, I've advertised for the water plant now in my four years twice. The first time I advertised, I had absolutely no applications. The second time I advertised, I sent out hand-selected emails to operators within this area. I received one, one application, and that gentleman lived about 25 minutes away, 20 minutes away probably. So we were able to hire him in because we couldn't hire anybody. So this time, I wasn't receiving applications, so I sent out over 500 emails to every single operator in Washington State to try to get to apply for this job. Mind you, our rates, our pay rates are not where other companies will pay, bigger cities. So, so I'm asking, I asked Pete, I said, can we extend it to at least match our contract that says you have a 30-minute response time? And at the same time, it also allowed us to draw from a little wider, broad range to probably try to get an operator within Woodland to, at least somebody to hire. And we were actually had a great handful of applicants that came in, and one of them happened to live in Woodland, and we were just blessed, and he was actually working in Longview. So, so, which, you know, it, to me, it doesn't make any sense for us to have a 15-minute or a public works response time when we allow them to respond within 30 minutes. So that was the reason why I asked for the change, and it also allows us to draw a little outside. I could draw from Vancouver, since it's going opposite traffic. I can... I could draw from, you know, Kalama, Castle Rock, possibly, depending on where they're living. So that's the reason why I asked for this. Hopefully, that answers the question.
Well, that did on the contract, because I didn't know about the contract. But how many people right now we got living outside the 20-minute area now when we have a 15-minute response time right now, or 20 minutes? I think we got 20 minutes now. I think it was changed since I left. It used to be 15, then it went to 20, now it's going to 30.
I think it's still only 15.
It's only 15.
It's 20 for the police officers.
How many people we got living outside the 20, 15?
It's only 15. And some of them that are living outside are not union employees, which is myself. I live 20 minutes.
But we have a contract for 15.
But I have a contract, and it was approved ahead of time before I was hired.
It's also the discretion of the mayor for the executive team.
And also, I think what you guys have to realize, and I'm just saying this as a broad, you can't Google somebody's address and the city because when you Google it, that Google gives you the time of the day that you're Googling, and how long it takes somebody to respond. So like, if I'm Googling at 5 o'clock, how long it takes for me to get from here to Salmon Creek, it could take me 30 minutes. It could take me 40 minutes, depending on what's going on on the freeway. So what I'm just saying is, we're looking at an average response time within a normal operation, you know, normal traffic of 30 minutes, which maxes the contract.
That's what I was asking.
No, I just wanted to explain to you.
Could I think if you draw a circle around the area of your mileage, you can see where they're supposed to live?
You hope.
I have a, I have a question.
I got my answers.
Does this same thing apply to, like, clerks in the clerk's office?
No.
They don't?
It only applies to public works and police people.
Well, I, I would think there's some things down there that might be considered an emergency, so I was just curious.
Yeah. It's just, it's just really tough to draw people in who have certifications in our wastewater and our water operations.
Right.
Let alone try to find somebody with superintendent qualifications in a city. It's just hard to find people who, because as a superintendent, you have to have certifications.
Right, and the last two years in, in our public works meetings, you've had a heck of a time trying to get people
Yes.
to fill the positions. But we are legally required to have people certified in.
Correct.
So it's kind of a thing. So which departments all, does this play in? So we have public works, because sewer and water's important. Police, because that's important. Who else?
That's it.
The fire department? They're not us anymore, but, right, but they just went by the window, so that's why. I threw that out there. And then, so the clerk's office, it doesn't play in. It's just public works and police. Gotcha. Okay.
I'm just trying to let you.
I was just curious.
I'm, I'm just trying to let you know. I'm asking questions because I get citizens asking me the answer, and I'm supposed to know it, so.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I got the answer.
You know what you can do? You can say, call Ms. Coleman, and she'll explain it.
No.
That's, she's satisfied me.
All right, anything further? All right, seeing nothing else, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on Action Item H, Ordinance Number 1504.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
All right, the Action Item H has passed. The time is now 8:12. We'll take a 10-minute recess before we go into our next executive session.
I see one thing.
Oh, yes.
It's a closed session.
A closed session.
He already gavelled, sorry.
Yeah. The email conversation came up during the discussion on the lieutenant.
Standby, we're back in, we're back in session. We're not at recess yet. Go ahead.
The emails came up during the lieutenant conversation. Can we make sure that those go into public record? The emails that were sent to all the council?
They are. They got the mail.
City stat all come out of the email. Someone could email it to me.
I will.
We weren't made privy to this correspondence.
Really? No, they were which sent to us, but they were sent on the city email.
Yeah, and that's.
And we have a copy of the city email.
People can request that, but.
Councilmember Smith is asking that it be recorded in the record, Mr. Burke, and that's what we'll do. The time is now 8:13. We'll take a 10-minute recess.
This conference is no longer being recorded.